Everybody else. Hey. Well, we will welcome everybody to the meeting tonight. This is the City of Sandy Planning Commission. It's Monday, January 30th, 2023. This meeting held in hybrid format, both in person and Zoom. We'll get directions later on when it comes time for testimony about how people can participate. But before the next thing, find out who's here and give a roll call.
Commissioner Wagner.
Here.
Commissioner Pullen.
Here.
Commissioner Hook.
Here.
Commissioner Lee.
Here.
And Chair Crosby.
Here. That gives us the forum. Right, you had packets minutes from the, I forget that, you have something else before that. This is our annual time to select a point or however we decide to do it. The chairman and the vice chair for the next year.
You confirm that they can still hear us. We're getting some weird tea back there.
Okay, can the other commissioners here?
Yes.
Yes.
Try again, can all you commissioners hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Commissioner Hook, can you hear me?
Yes.
All right, well, we have our first task tonight is to select a chair and a vice chair for the next year for 2023. Kelly put in the packet page. So we can nominate or appointments. We normally kind of do it informally. But end up with a motion.
I would like to nominate you Chair Crosby because the rest of us have been on this commission a fairly short time. And whoever is vice chair will have a chance to learn.
I'd like to say that. That's. And this is just so you know, this would be my second year of our new two-year term thing. But we still would need a vice chair. Anybody, anybody, let's just ask, be, you know, be honest, if it's something you're interested in doing, say so. Don't be bashful.
This is Stephen. I'd be interested.
Okay.
I second that.
Any other discussion on that? Then we did think somebody put together a motion. Kelly gave us the words at the bottom.
I move to appoint Commissioner Crosby as the chair, Commissioner Hook as the vice chair of the Sandy Commission for 2023.
I second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to appoint Commissioner Crosby as chair, Commissioner Hook as vice chair for this calendar year. And we'll just do a voice vote. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed or abstentions? Okay. We will move ahead. Now we can go to the minutes. We had draft minutes from the November 28th, 2022 meeting. Anybody have anything they want to, any corrections, additions, changes that they saw and need to be? Okay, with nothing heard, we will consider them approved as presented. This is a time when we give opportunity for anybody in the audience to give any comments to the planning commission related to things that are not on tonight's agenda. And just now, so if you want to do that, to speak to the planning commission, if you're on Zoom, just click the raise hand button and wait to be recognized. And if you are participating by phone, then it's star nine to effectively raise your hand and wait to be recognized. So if there's anybody that just wants to have comments, general comments to the commission. Now it's time to step, step forward figuratively or literally.
I was thinking move forward. This might not be a bad opportunity either. Chris, if you have comments from like city council, it's something I was going to actually change for the next agenda to have a spot on here for you. Because I felt like I've been running that for the last couple of years since Counselor Sheldon was on here. So I don't know if you have anything you want to talk about. I don't want to put you on the spot, but I realized that definitely added an agenda spot.
Yeah, yeah, it's good to recognize the liaison.
Well, you did put me on the spot. So for the record, Chris Maite and City Councilor, you don't need my address, right? No, 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 no. Since I've only been at City Council for the better part of four weeks, I don't have any update to provide to the planning commission other than I am your new liaison for City Council. So which, you know, after being here on this chair, on this commission for almost five years, it's a pleasure to be back and I'm glad to not have to leave the group. And I essentially, I'm learning my, my role as a liaison for the planning commission. I'll mostly just minutes that you set out and regurgitate those back to the council. And then anything that comes up during the council that pertains to land use, I'll bring back to this unit and I would have if something goes on the table like that. Other than that, thank you for the four years, nine months I was on. I said that's your, so yes, now I, now I sit in that one. I'm different. So thank you for Chair Crosby for, you know, helping me evolve into who I am today as a, as a company. I thank you for that.
Thanks. We're thankful for where you are. We miss you here. We're thankful where you are too.
We've got lots of advocates. The commission's come a long way in five years, so.
Thanks. We can move right to your report, Kelly.
And I was going to keep it pretty short. I unfortunately didn't have an opportunity to put a written report together like I typically do. What I was going to give you an update on a few different things. One was that Counselor Maite is going to be our liaison, which I believe you mostly knew from an email I sent earlier last week. Another update is I'm actually, one of our staff members who's been here a little over four years, she took a job with Northwest Natural. So we're going to miss her. Her last day is this Friday. And so if you see a new job opening on the city website, that is for that position, most likely the permit technician two. So if you know anybody with any permit software background, please let them know that there's an application open for a few more weeks. We'd love to get a lot of applications and go to have a really good candidate. It's a, it's actually a pretty hard demanding job, to be quite honest, because you have to deal with quite a bit of, quite a few angry customers at the front counter, a lot of pretty prescriptive code. And a lot in a pretty busy permit counter, to be honest. So I know I'm not selling the job very well right now, but I think it is a pretty fun job. There's a lot of autonomy actually in it as well, because they are the one running the permit counter. But just so you know, for people in the community to hopefully be patient with us, because year and a half ago, we had three people up there and now we're down to one person for a while. So there's a few other departments that are stepping up to the plate and really helping us out and having some people come down a couple of days a week. And then Marisol, the person that is leaving, she gave us a phenomenal offer to kind of work remotely on the side here and there a little bit, a few hours a week, just to kind of answer any inquiries or any issues we're having. So it's going to be a pretty big change for our department. We're a small department. So when you have even one staff member leave, it's, it's a pretty big change. And then I was going to give an update also on where we're sitting with the moratorium. We've issued as of today, I think, 23.70 RUs. We issued three houses today. We have another seven or, seven or eight houses we'll be issuing in the next couple of weeks. And then some apartments as well. So we'll, we'll be down to probably about 70 or 80 RUs come the end of February or March. The positive thing though is we've had some preliminary estimation going on based on sewer flows this winter as opposed to previous winters. And it looks like a lot of the the fixes we've been making at the sewer treatment plant and also in the pipes that were leaking throughout town have been working. So we're very, we're cautiously optimistic that all the work and money that the city's put into it and all the rate payers have as well is going to pay off and we're going to have a lot more RUs available. You know, after the stress tests and after everything's performed. So more news on that. It's, it's, it's most likely that the city council is going to have to enter into an extension of the moratorium. Just because the stress test timing and when we'd be coming to terms with how many additional RUs we'd be able to have in the system, it's just not going to timeout. So there's going to be, had to be a gap there, but just pay close attention at city council. They should be coming back at one of the March meetings and taking another look at the moratorium and seeing if they need to extend it or not, and then seeing how long they're going to extend it for. So that, that's coming. We probably have plenty of other things. The, the clear and objective audit, which we have a contract for with MIG APG, we're working our way through that. As you can imagine, that takes quite a bit of time. The TSP actually finally, the final documents being written on that after four or five years. And we should be going through adoption in May and June. That's what's set on ODOTs and our EKS's calendar. And then the comprehensive plan, we're starting to review the different blocks and look at our vision and goals within those blocks. And so you'll be seeing more of that at future city council meetings and you'll be being invited to work sessions with council. I think you're going to be invited to three work sessions over the next eight or nine months regarding the comprehensive plan. You'll probably be invited to at least one on the clear and objective audit and at least one on the TSP. And that's, that's in addition to the hearings that would occur here at the planning mission. So and then the last thing is the application process for McLean, Lenzel and Maite, two spots. We did get 12 applications for the people being qualified due to residency restrictions. And then there was eight people, a panel reduced that number to five, and I believe the interviews are happening this Thursday. And Chair Crosby is on the panel along with Mayor Polam and Counselors Walker and Sheldon, I believe. That's kind of my verbal update for the month.
Okay.
Yeah.
Any questions of staff?
Yes, I had my hand up because I was just wondering, Kelly, if you have a really ballpark estimate of what kind of backlog due to the moratorium might be out there over the next couple of months? Things that would be ready to be permitted?
You know, it's a really good question. Unfortunately, I don't think I have an answer. I think I think more so than the moratorium, I think 362nd and Bell, when that's completed later this year, I think that's going to put some pressure on that area, that commercial area mainly, but there are some higher density residential areas off of Bell Street. I think there's going to be some pressure to the vault, some of that area. So that I think could be more of the backlog, I think, is kind of development in that area. I think there are a subdivision or two that we, we could see move forward once the moratorium's lifted. But you know, I think with, you know, rising interest rates and also just the rising cost to build a home, I think it, we're going to have a slowdown anyways, even without the moratorium. So I, I don't think there's as big of a backlog as there would have been, say, in 2018 or 2019 if the moratorium would have started then.
Thank you.
Yeah. So I know it's not a real answer, but I don't think a huge backlog actually at this point.
No, I hadn't thought about the commercial backlog. That could be a big one.
Yeah.
Any other question? Staff? Right. Well, move into our one public hearing this evening. And we will open that public hearing at 6:46. This is file number 22-037. Design review and variance Johnson RV canopy cover. Call for any abstentions from the planning commission. I don't see or hear anything. Any conflicts of interest to declare? Nothing seen or any ex parte contact? To declare? Okay, nothing seen or heard. Any challenges to members of the hearing body, to anybody on the planning commission or the planning commission itself? Okay. If you testify, you must raise all issues you wish to address at this hearing. If your issue is not raised at this hearing, you may not be able to raise it later in any appeal. Your comments should state why the application should or should not be approved or include your proposed modifications you believe are necessary for approval according to the standards. If you do not raise specific issues at the final evidentiary hearing or by close of the record or fail to provide statements or evidence to allow the local government who is designated to respond to the issue, you will not be able to appeal the decision to the land use board of appeals based on that particular issue. Any party may request that the hearing be continued to a later date or that the record remain open after the hearing is closed. Failure of the applicant to raise constitutional or other issues relating to the proposed conditions of approval with sufficient specificity to allow the local government who is designated to respond to the issue precludes an action for damages in circuit court. With that, we'll turn it over to Shelley for staff report.
Great. Let me share my screen. So we're talking about an addition to an existing building to Johnson RV. And that's important to keep in mind. So the request is to construct a little over 7,000 square foot awning on the east side of an existing building with associated required improvements like parking and landscaping. There were three specific requests, a design review, a type two variance and a type three special variance. So even though the planning commission is responsible for only deciding on that type three special variance, I'm still going to present a little bit of kind of key information related to the design review and that type two variance. So the subject property is right at the southeast corner of 362nd and Industrial Way. It's about 3.4 acres in size. The existing building that's on there, you can, I don't know how well you can see that, but there's the main industrial building as well as an office building. Comes out to be about 22,000 square feet on the property. Um, the property, which is, there's lots of colors going on here, but the one outlined in orange, right in the middle of the screen, that is designated I2, that's light industrial. You'll notice that there's quite a bit of different zoning kind of packed into this area. The red is commercial, that yellow to the south is residential and that blue over to the west is industrial park. So this is the existing site plan. You can see that existing industrial building. That's about 20,000, 20.2,000 square feet. There is enough parking to accommodate that building. You'll also notice quick orientation. You'll notice that we flipped the map. So north is now pointing left. So over there on the, the west side onto 362nd is the only current driveway access into the property. So the proposal is this 7.3,000 square foot canopy area. A few important things to also call out in this site plan. This driveway to 362nd, they're proposing moving it a little to the south. That's because the property immediately to the south also has a driveway under 362nd and that will line up these two driveways on either side of 362nd. And then there's also a proposal to install an additional driveway to the north on industrial way. And that's specifically to maneuver RVs on and off the property. I should also mention exactly what this canopy cover is going to be for. So the applicant can correct me if I'm wrong, but it's for washing and providing maintenance to RVs. So a couple of key things that I wanted to call out with the design review. One of them is the landscape buffer. So our chapter on the I2 zoning district, 1750 requires a landscape buffer between industrial land uses and arterial roads. Based on a site visit and then also looking at the proposed landscaping plan, it doesn't look like there's going to be quite the adequate buffer that the intent of the chapter is requires. So we did include the condition in the staff report to include additional large evergreen trees. And we specify capable of growing to at least 30 feet in height at a density that will create a visual screen within five years. So we did add that condition to try to ensure that the intent of that code section is met. Additionally, there was a little bit of analysis that we needed to do on those driveways. So section 1790 requires authorization from the city engineer to have more than one driveway access on a lot that has more than 150 feet of street drainage. So this lot has 800 feet of street drainage because it's on the corner. Still requires the authorization, which the, both the city's traffic engineer and the city's civil engineer agree to driveways on the sites does not pose any kind of safety or congestion issues with our transportation network. And then if you'll remember from that proposed site plan, they're proposing two separate driveways, one on 362nd, one on industrial way. And yeah, yeah. So the second driveway, city engineer says it's fine. So 1798, which is the street and access chapter requires authorization to set a driveway on an arterial road within 150 feet of an intersection. So that realignment of that driveway on the west onto 362nd is based on kind of a rough measurement is about 150 feet, 105 feet south of the 362nd and industrial way intersection. But according to the consulting with the city traffic engineer, it's justified because it by aligning with that driveway to that properties to the west makes sense. So a little bit about that type two variance. The variance being requested is specifically to the roof pitch. So the code requires a roof pitch of three to 12. And the applicant is proposing a roof pitch of two to 12. And the reasoning for that is that the existing building has a two to 12 roof pitch and it would look weird to have a canopy at a different roof pitch. So just a little diagram. So you can get an idea of what, what those numbers mean. So the proposed roof pitch of two to 12 is a little flatter than the required roof pitch of three to 12, but not by a whole lot. This is one of the architectural elevations where you can see how the roof pitch, that two to 12 roof pitch of the canopy cover aligns with the existing roof pitch of the building. So staff, our recommendation is to approve the type two variance for the sake of matching the existing architecture that's on the site. So what planning commission needs to discuss and make a decision on is the type three special variance. That request was to waive sidewalk improvements along industrial way. And the reasoning for that is that our currently adopted transportation system plan in the capital improvements projects list, it includes industrial, industrial way at some point being realigned. So this is an image from the TSP. You can see industrial way over here, potential realignment paths at different curve radius. So the kind of argument here is that it doesn't make sense to construct a sidewalk along a part of the street that at some point in the near future is planned to be realigned with new sidewalks put in anyway. So in a section or in chapter 1766, which is the chapter that deals with adjustments and variances, there are three review criteria related to a type three special variance, but only one of them needs to be met. And the one that is applicable in this case is in 176680A, which says the unique nature of the proposed development is such of the intent and purpose of the regulations and that the provisions to be waived will not be violated. An authorization of the special variance will not be materially detrimental to the public welfare and will not be injurious to other property in the area when compared with the effects of development otherwise permitted. So we didn't receive any public comments from any surrounding property owners saying that this was going to be an issue. There's no reason to believe that not having a sidewalk for the period of time up until that gets realigned, until industrial way gets realigned, is going to be in any way material, materially detrimental to the public welfare, nor will it affect surrounding properties, property values, anything like that. And in fact, one could argue that requiring the sidewalk at this point only to tear it out with the realignment actually creates unnecessary construction nuisance by doing the same project twice unnecessarily. So the condition that was recommended to us by our traffic engineer is for the applicant to pay a fee in lieu of sidewalk improvements. According to an approved engineer estimate. So it would be the applicant's responsibility to submit an itemized engineer estimate for sidewalk and street tree installation along that industrial way footage and they would then pay that fee in lieu to help the city offset the cost of those road improvements of the industrial way realignment. And then very briefly, there was a requested change by the applicant to one of the conditions. So the existing condition, the intent of that condition is basically to make sure that there's not just a lot of visual clutter related to storage of merchandise on the property. And so the applicant requested this proposed change to that condition to make it a little more specific regarding displaying recreational vehicles for sale, which staff is fine with that proposed change. We believe that it meets the intent of what it was we were trying to condition. So our recommendation is that. Planning commission approve the application with the type three special variants with the conditions as detailed in the staff report.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Shelley before we move on?
Like Jan has a question.
Now I don't have a screen with the individual.
I just wanted to ask Shelley, it looks like the realignment of industrial way. About right up against the corner of the existing building is. Are there dimensions there that I'm not seeing?
No, you're correct. Oh, I should not unhook that, you're correct. So the what's in the T S P, this diagram that's in the T S P is conceptual. It's not necessarily the case that the realignment is going to look like this. But it is in the capital improvement projects list. To ensure that industrial way is realigned with with. It's itself over on the west side, west of three sixty second.
It's twin.
Kelly can probably speak to that a little bit more, that kind of difference between a conceptual plan and an actual site plan. And what that means for this property.
Thank you.
Along those same lines, I mean, what's. I know city council and everybody's been working on that T S P and discussing priorities and. I mean, it's taken them forever to build three sixty second bell, which I know is a much bigger project. I mean, what's the likelihood of this actually getting funded, where's it lit out on the priority list for the next five, ten, fifteen years? And what's that, is it actually going to happen? I know just because it's on the list doesn't necessarily mean that anybody actually wants to do it anytime soon.
Yeah, that's a great question. Let me pull up the.
Yeah, it's, it won't happen in the next five years, I can tell you that. We unfortunately only have eleven million dollars for the next twenty years and we have. I don't know, I forgot what the number is, two hundred million dollars and in street projects, something like that, plus a four or five hundred million dollar bypass, so. You can do the math real quick and there's not a lot of projects that are going to get funded. However, there will be a transportation system development charge increase that will likely happen. Associated with the T S P adoption, we've already hired F C S group out of Tacoma to analyze and look at that. And then most likely at some point, there'll have to be some other consideration for something. To raise more funds, I mean, there's going to have to be. And I'll stay away from what that could be, but they'll have to be because otherwise there's going to be very little if any road projects done here over the next twenty years. They just cost too much now. So this definitely won't be a five year project, but I do I do see it being a project in that twenty year horizon. It's not on the top. It's not in like the top priority list, though, like the funded list with eleven million. But if if we if we get more money over the next twenty years, it could make the next cut, definitely.
Yeah, I'm just looking at the the T S P, it looks like there are two proposed projects. Related to intersections owned by the city of Sandy. One of those is the three sixty second and industrial realignment.
Is that the current T S P?
Yeah, the two thousand and eleven T S P. With projected cost in two thousand and nine dollars, so add ten percent to three point three million dollars. Yeah, so yeah, that, I guess the short answer to your question is we don't know when this is going to be built, we don't know when this is going to be realigned. But we do know that it is in the capital improvement project list to be done at some point in the future. And that is a very unsatisfying answer. Yeah, but with with the fee in lieu from the applicant and with the increased transportation S D Cs. There's, you know, the likelihood that we'll be able to start picking up steam on some of these projects in the T S P.
And it doesn't seem like there's a lot of foot traffic in that area.
No, that's correct, yeah.
Yeah, I don't know who would be walking to get their RV washed.
There is quite a bit of foot traffic on three sixty second, but yeah, not, I don't think there's many people looking to go east on industrial way, not that I'm aware of.
Like why?
Yeah, and you get, you know, if you if you use the trails and the. Sidewalks around there, you can actually go up to the highway and then go on a path that's great separated from the highway, which I believe actually. Tracy, who's in the room here, he actually planted a lot of the trees along there and that's actually a pretty nice walking corridor. I I use that when I like jog around town, I wouldn't use industrial, but I just wouldn't, because then you have driveways and everything that you're having to pay attention to. If you got to the highway to that sidewalk, it's just there's no, there's no obstructions, you can just go for about a third of a mile there.
And then it also looks like if somebody did need to walk on that section of industrial way, I just verified this with a Google Street View. There are sidewalks on that north side of industrial way that were, I imagine, installed as part of. The development of that property to the north.
All right, well, we'll move on to applicant's presentation. The floor is yours.
Good evening, my name is Tracy Brown, one seven zero seven five for Drive in Sandy. When he's planning consultants, I worked with a team of Ray Moore and Lance Forney of all county surveyors. Mike Guard, who did the transportation study, and we have Blaine doing the architecture. Scoheady, I think is his last name, that's still, so at this point, I'm going to ask Robert Murray from Johnson R V to come up and just introduce himself. And talk about the project, then I'll come back up and. Just give a brief overview of our perspective on the staff recommendation.
All right, as you said, I'm Robert Murray from Johnson R V and we are excited to grow our business in the city of Sandy. This property would allow us to expand business and to bring some of our current hundred and twenty employees that are the north or the east location there down here closer to town. Be more accessible and give us the space we need to continue to grow our business. Yeah, that's pretty much it, it's just going to be a service facility, customer, the the public's not going to come there, it's mostly just for internal work where we. Clean the RVs, fix them up, and then we send them to this store or the store up in Tacoma, Washington for sale, so there won't be. Public customers on this property, it's just for our own internal use. And it'll be better for our employees because they'll be closer to town, which means they'll be. Shopping at Fred Myers and eating lunch and stuff rather than having to drive into town or go to the one little gas station up the street from where we are now. And we'll also keep as many people from leaving for lunch from there, crossing the highway, coming all the way into town, so it's a safety thing for me, too. It's better to bring all our people closer to town and. They could actually walk down the new sidewalk, we are going to provide across the street over into that Fred Meyer complex. So, yeah, we're excited to continue to grow our business here and. And invest some money into that piece of property, it's been bacon for a while, so it needs a little love, but. We'll get all the trees up to snuff and get it painted and make it look a little better and at the same time provide what we need for our business, so. I have a hundred and twenty currently at this location. Probably when it's all said and done, the Sandy Johnson R V will employ a hundred and thirty to a hundred and thirty five people. We use this as our corporate headquarters, we have three other stores, Tacoma, Washington, Medford, Oregon, and Gilroy, California. And all of the corporate stuff is from here, so. Well, actually, a lot of my employees that are here now in multiple departments have relocated to Sandy and purchased homes here and have families here and now they're in the school system here, so. It's been kind of neat to see if we've grown the amount of people that can join our team. It's a pretty cool culture of young families that moved to town and consider that. See more of that, you know, as we continue to grow and service our other locations, so. Any other questions for me?
Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely.
It'd be good to have Robert kind of introduce himself and kind of talk about the, you know, their presence in the city of Sandy and what they want to do on that site, so. Yeah, I mean, I don't have a lot to say, you know, in reviewing, we kind of went through at a at a team meeting, went through each and every. Condition and finding, and that was the only one that D three was the only one that caught our eye. You know, and probably the way it was worded could work and we were just a little concerned that. The use of the word merchandise could be construed to mean. Storage of vehicles getting repaired could be considered merchandise, as they technically are. And then they will, you know, after the repair, then they'll be moved up to the site, the sales site. So the, and so I thought the the language I offered was a little more specific. You know, that I don't have any intent to sell anything from that site, it's all focused on repair. Fix it up and then move it to the various other locations. So with that, you know, we are, as Shelley mentioned, requesting the type two variant to the roof pitch. There have been other examples of that variance being granted, I think the US metal works where the bus barn is. They received a similar variance. And then the type three special variants to the front end improvements, we felt like that made sense and the recommended condition to pay a fee in lieu of. Seeing reasonable to us and the applicant. So with that, we would, you know, recommend that you approve it as recommended by staff. You know, if there's any questions for me from folks on Zoom or in the room.
Say anything, I did have actually one of the question, I read there was mentioned. Dumping being installed, was that just for RVs that you guys are servicing, not open to the public?
Absolutely.
Perfect.
Yeah, and there's also a oil grease separator recommended to be installed, that's connected to the wash associated with the wash bay. So that, you know, the water that comes off of that bay will go through the old grease separator before it gets put into the city's sanitary system.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you. It will move into opportunity for public testimony. And we will be asking, I'll be calling for testimony in favor and then testimony that's not in favor and then any neutral testimony, so if you are. Listening or watching and you want to give testimony, if you're on the Zoom call, just click the raise hand icon. And wait to be recognized by Kelly, if you're on the telephone, dial star nine and that will raise your hand. And again, wait to be recognized. So we'll begin with asking for any testimony that is in favor of the proposal.
I don't see any hands raised.
Okay. And we'll move on to any testimony that is against the proposal.
Again, I do not see any hands raised.
Okay, nothing seen. And finally, for any neutral testimony, if you are neither in favor or opposed necessarily, just have a comment in general nature about the proposal.
Again, no interest.
Okay. Shelley, do you have any recap to offer?
No.
That doesn't give you much, you don't need to, you do you want to rebut her silence? Okay. We will. Since the applicant's representative is in the is in the room, we'll keep the public hearing open while we. While the commission discusses. Questions, observations, something you want clarification on for any commissioner?
I can start. Or the. Not that it'll actually matter, considering that the realignment would take out this whole chunk, but the. The twenty foot tree buffer on. Side of the property that the sidewalks be. Possible variance for, is that including room for that sidewalk there? So we're not taking the sidewalk out of that twenty foot buffer. So essentially there's twenty six, twenty eight feet of buffer then?
Well, the whole property layout would change with that realignment. So. Is your question, does the the proposed twenty foot buffer include space for the sidewalk?
The the goal, the question is to make sure that when we do eventually put in a sidewalk. That there would still be twenty feet of vegetation buffer there, that we're not cutting out of that twenty feet and leaving ten or six or fourteen.
Yeah, that would that would have to be something that would be determined with the future design review of. The realignment and the those improvements.
Yeah, it'd be, it's actually pretty complicated because it would be taking out part of the building. So I think a big chunk of what's so expensive about that realignment is. Basically the takings of property rights, so not only are we taking a swath of that property, we're also taking on an existing two story building. And we're kind of splitting the property into which is making the, it has to make the value quite a bit less.
Right, and so that's kind of where I get, I guess, the second part of my worry with this is that we're holding. We're not putting in the sidewalk because this is happening so soon. That it makes sense to just get money. But yet if it's happening so soon, why are these those nice folks spending so much money on this property to just take it all out with the road? You know, like.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And maybe.
I mean, I like banking money, I like having extra money, especially when there's a sidewalk on the other side of the street, but it just doesn't. Makes the argument that it's happening so soon that we should just keep the money, doesn't make sense to me. If they're doing all of these improvements, that we're just going to then have to pay them for in order to get the property back, because their property value is going to go up. So that property is even more expensive after we approve this.
Right, I guess the question would be then is, well, what's the alternative? You know, require them to build a sidewalk that. That money might be better used as invested by the city. As opposed to going to a redundant sidewalk, even if that redundancy is going to come twenty years from now. Yeah, it's a lot of. Trying to tell the future.
Yeah.
You know?
I mean, if, you know, I just see a situation down the road where that sidewalk could have been a benefit to somebody, right? And it's not there, so somebody is walking in the street and we had the choice to put it in fifteen, ten years ago and we didn't because we thought this might happen one day. You know? We have the code that says sidewalk should be put on both sides of the street, you know, for a reason. And. That being said, I do like money, I like keeping money. So that's just where I'm at for other commissioners on that.
There's two ways to look at that, so that. So we we take a hundred and ten percent of the cost, so if. You know, twenty five years down the line, this happened, it's not going to cover the sidewalk, but you know, that's just a gamble the city would have to take. However, if we decide in five years that we want to put the sidewalk in in the right away, we'll have that money sitting aside, so the city could go forward and. Put in the sidewalk with the fee in lieu of not that they'd be paying, or we can just retain it in the hopes of using it for the realignment in the future. The other nice thing is when we have money sitting in the bank like that, it's additional money we can lend against. So every, you know, every. Ten thousand dollars you have in there, it's just more lending ability, so I do I do like having that because like I said, we don't have a lot of money for transportation, so.
Yeah, and thinking, and I think that's the point that I needed, maybe was the. We don't have to keep it forever, we can wait and wait for the realignment, if it's decided that that's too far in the future, we can go ahead and.
We definitely can, yeah.
So I think that's the piece that I need, so thank you.
There's right away there that we could move forward with the sidewalk, you know, say three or four or five years from now, we said, no, actually, we're not going to do the realignment anymore, we could we could. Use that money and build the sidewalk.
And that's the piece that I need to remind it of, so with that, I think I am okay with both variances, the. As far as the condition change goes, not that I think this is necessarily going to happen, but when we just specify recreational vehicles. I think part of the intent of that condition was also like any extra parts or inventory that might. I think part of the intent of that condition was also like any extra parts or inventory that might sit that are not necessarily just the vehicle. You know, that could be placed in our repair yard, you know, trailers or, you know, pieces of trailers, I don't know, whatever it is that, you know, folks use in store. But I think as far as that visual clutter, to me, it's less about the recreational vehicles and more about that type of thing.
Can you put up on the screen that, that D three, the original on the?
Yes.
Can't find it in emails right now. Yeah, I'm I'm, I'm good, I'm okay with the proposed change, it is, it is restrictive. And then it only refers to vehicles for sale. At what point is it for sale? Because you know, is it for sale while they're repairing it? Or washing it, or does it become for sale when it's off the property and a lot? I, you know, I'm not nervous that it's going to be abused or anything. Trying to figure, did you have a question, Chris? While the public hearing is still open and we'll, we'll, we'll put you in an official role and give you the opportunity, so.
I was just going to offer an alternative suggested to that, if somebody was uncomfortable with the revised, revised changes. Couldn't you just authorize them to have recreational vehicles on the lot? As, as it says here, storage for merchandise and all related materials unless authorized, you could simply authorize recreational vehicles to be stored on the lot.
Yeah. Um, we do want to specify that, uh, not recreational vehicles that are inventory for sale. That's the only storage of recreational vehicles on the property is specifically for those vehicles that are being washed or
Repair.
Repair, yeah.
They're gonna, they're gonna have to pull one out of a bay, they get another one in to repair it and park it for two or three days while the thing's in, and they're, we're moving things back and forth all the time, but they'll be whole. For the most part. When I first read it and saw the word merchandise, I just thought of things that you sell, I, I was going to look merchandise up in the dictionary. And, because I, I don't know, I think of it as merchandise as things you sell, not, not like a toolbox, as merchandise, I mean, that's what I think of.
You did, you don't have the city attorney on the call if you want to get his input, I mean, I don't know if you, if you feel it's worth it or not, he is on the call.
No, I, I don't think it's, well, if he wants to, do it. So we get a
Or is the definition of merchandise? Is that the question?
Well, have we just one that I was wondering about in the original one, but if we, if we take it out of the proposal?
Yeah.
It doesn't matter.
The, um, the original condition, as I originally written it, is pulled directly from the code. And when we can take the intent of the code and make it very specific and apply it to a very specific case, I think that's generally a good practice. And that's what this proposed revision does, is it takes the intent, we don't want a lot of visual clutter of a sales lot. And makes it specific to this application.
I think, I think it's not just clutter either, though, I think it's also just like the transportation impact study probably didn't evaluate it for a sales lot. So the improvements that are happening transportation-wise are for the purpose that Johnson RV is intending to use it for, and that's for fixing RVs, the other thing too is, I think if it did morph into a sales lot, then I think then we want the sidewalk, because a lot of more people walking around and milling about, so, yeah, and you do have a commissioner with their hand up. Commissioner Pullen.
Okay, Commissioner Pullen, go ahead.
Would it be feasible to take the language from the original where it says and or related materials? And just add that to the recreational vehicles and or related materials for sale?
That would be the applicant shall not use the outdoor portion of the property as storage. Or
I think what she's saying is on that, the bottom one, applicant shall not use the outdoor portion of the property to store or display recreational vehicles and or related materials for sale, oh, well, display recreational vehicles for sale and or related materials unless authorized, and then you run into the question of, okay, what are related materials?
Exactly.
But yeah, I guess what I'm thinking of is, and I don't even know if this happens, but you know, creative you know, wastewater tanks that are waiting to be installed, or, you know, a pallet of you know, stoves or, I don't know, whatever you stick in a, you know, in an RV and you have these pallets just kind of sitting around the lot, that's, I guess, what I'm thinking of, I'm not necessarily thinking of it as a for sale place, but I'm thinking, you know, not that I've driven by your place many times, it's always very nice, but it's professional, but you know, you do drive by some of these places, have these repair yards, and they just have all of their extra parts strewn about their yard, right? And that's, I guess, when I read the original, that I was, that's what I pictured in my head, is that I was trying to prevent us all of that extra stuff.
So how do we put that in words? That's clear and objective. Yeah, yeah. Yeah, that gets you on the recording.
I can understand the concern, one thing you guys should know is we don't work on all the chassis part of the RV, we just work on the house part. So anything that comes in cannot sit outside. So that's why we have the canopy and why we have the built, the building size that we do, like all of those parts and pieces. I mean, they're highly valuable and they're designed to go inside, obviously, they're already like a home, so we can't really let any of that stuff sit outside. And then it, you know, that would obviously cost me a lot of money if all the stuff sat outside, it would bad, so, yeah, the, the intent is not to have anything out there at all, that's, and even in the designer view thing, we have a spot designed for the detailed stuff where it's all enclosed behind the, behind the building. It's just RV is going to sit there while they, like you said, go in and out of the bay until they're finished, and then they go out the driveway to the store, so no intent to have anything other than just RVs outside, if that helps at all.
Probably, I, I think if we did add the related materials into the proposal, that that would just kind of cover everything. That would, not, not that we are distrusting, but others are back.
Due diligence.
And it, and it does say unless authorized, so if there's a special request, I can authorize it.
So it would be should not use it for to store, display recreational vehicles or related materials. The verb is still store. Unless authorized. Make that make sense? Okay with that?
Yeah.
I don't know that, you know, it's not a light year change, but.
Yeah. This is, this is why I got a master stream and planning. So the applicant shall not use the outdoor portion of the property to store or display recreational vehicles for sale and or related materials is different from the applicant shall not use the outdoor portion of the property to store or display recreational vehicles and or related materials for sale.
Correct.
Unless authorized, so which one do we want to?
My thought was that the sale part would only relate to the recreational vehicles.
Okay, that's mine too.
Yeah.
That's my interpretation.
And that the other materials would not necessarily be for sale.
Yeah, okay. Yep, we can change that.
And then it does have the less authorized, so if there's some special
Right.
where we don't feel it's better, yeah.
Yeah.
It gets us flexibility to, to work with them on a
He calls you up, says, I got, I got a special deal on a boatload of stoves. Place to put them.
Yeah. And I, I also think this is like a, a good opportunity to trust, I mean, trust the market. Right, a private business owner who's trying to make their lot look nice and look presentable is not going to have a whole bunch of clutter. But this condition does allow that if, if for some reason they decided to make it into an RV junkyard, that we would be able to say, oh, you're not appropriately meeting this condition. Yeah.
All right, any other comments? We had two conditions. The sidewalk and the roof pitch, any concerns on the roof pitch? Sure made sense to me. I just can't imagine.
We could have made them put a faux roof on top of the existing building. But no, we're not going to do that.
On this, while you have this up. You've got the north awning and south awning.
Yeah, so it's, uh, it's articulated, so if I go back up to the proposed site plan, you'll see that a portion of the awning over here in North
Okay.
is actually a, a little more shallow.
The back part overhangs, in a sense, all right.
Yeah.
Makes sense, okay. If nobody has a concern, first thing we need to do is close the public hearing.
And of course, the public hearing.
A second.
Okay, been moved and seconded, and seconded to close the public hearing at seven thirty-two PM, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, and the opposed, I doubt it.
I think everybody was an aye.
Yep. But we move right into a motion, unless somebody has some other burning thing they want to talk about. The motion just needs to be to, to approve with staff recommendations.
I moved to, I moved to approve with staff recommendations and the change of wording on the what was that, the?
Condition.
Merchandise, yeah, on the condition, thank you.
One second. Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve file twenty-two dash zero three seven with the staff recommendations, including the rewording of condition D three. Take a roll call vote.
Oh, sorry. Commissioner Wagner?
Yes.
Commissioner Pullen?
Yes.
Commissioner Hook?
Yes.
Commissioner Lee?
Yes.
And Chairman Crosby?
Yes. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Look forward to seeing that there, that building's been sitting, sitting ugly for a long time.
Yeah.
And I was I was surprised by the number of employees.
I think we're the second largest in town behind Fred Meyer.
I wouldn't have guessed that, I mean, that you had that many, great. But there's no further comments or questions or concerns? We can adjourn.
Yeah.
We will adjourn, seven thirty-four.
Everybody.